Welcome to the Bossier City Council Regular Meeting. This is Tuesday, February the 5th, 2019. We will have the call to order, the invocation by Councilmember Jeffrey Darby, pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Timothy Larkin.
Let's pray. Holy Father, we're thankful for another day that you allowed us to see. We thank you, Lord God, for wrestling last night. We pray, Father God, for those who served this country, those who served this city. We thank you for them. We thank you, Lord God, for your greatness, and we thank you for your goodness. We thank you for your mercy and your kindness. Lord, we pray for those who are sick and those who are being recovered because of their sickness. Lord, we ask that you give us direction in this meeting to do those things that are beneficial to the ones we serve. In the name of Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
May you put face the flag, cite the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
He's here.
Mr. Larkin.
Here.
Oh, here.
Mr. Irwin.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Here.
All present.
Outstanding. All right. We're going to approve the minutes of the January 22nd, 2019 Regular Meeting and dispense with the reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Harvey. Please cast your vote.
You gotta get one from me.
Yeah, I can't even get my... Did you touch the Chrome button?
Nope.
That's the problem. I don't think you ever do.
You don't sign it?
I don't think so.
All right. I use this time to remind you to please silence your cell phones.
I don't know what that is.
Are you up?
Eighteen minutes.
I'm four.
You good?
Okay. We're good.
All right.
Mr. Free?
Yo.
Thank you.
I don't have anything for you.
I'm here in a cat if four. I'll refresh. There we go. You ready?
We've all voted.
Is that a yay or a no?
Oh. Yay, I voted.
We good?
There we go.
Good.
All right.
We're all here. President accounted for.
Outstanding.
Coordinated.
All right, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Larkin, second by Councilman Irwin. Please cast your vote. Ceremonial matters we have with us today, Stacy Brown with the Tourism Commission.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Appreciate you allowing me to come and invite you to a special meeting next week. Some of you were able to participate over the last few weeks in a special survey that we've been doing. It's called D-Next. So it's a company that has worked with about 200 destinations around the world to do an assessment of their destination and look at, you know, what do we have to offer visitors and how can we improve that to increase our visitation and increase our revenue that we receive from visitation and therefore taxes. And as well as that, what we do for visitors improves the life of our residents as well. So many of you were able to participate in that, but whether or not you have participated, we'd love for you to hear more of the results and be a part of crafting the next steps from this. So if you have a block of time to hear kind of the full story, it'll be next Tuesday from 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. So that's a little bit long. You'll hear about kind of the trends in the industry, the results of our survey, do some little brainstorming and kind of help craft the next steps. If you need the Cliff Notes version, I'll give you a special lunch with the consultant. So if that works better for you, just let me know and I'll reach out to you and see what works best. But we'd love to have you more involved in that process and see where we go now from here to build a better destination that drives more revenue from our visitors. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's going to be at the Tourism Commission, Stacy.
I'm sorry. 6:29 to break.
It's going to be at the Tourism Commission.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The meeting is at Samstown. And then the lunch, we'll determine a place for that. It may be there at Samstown as well, but we'll see. Sorry, I thought you meant the location of the Bureau.
All right. Next, we have Kelly Wells with the Sports Commission.
Thank you, Council and Mayor, and just wanted to come out and let y'all know how good a job Bubba Williams is doing as y'all's appointee on the Sports Commission Board. And I see he's got his shirt on today in honor of the state wrestling tournament. And David Montgomery, being a wrestler, we had a customized singlet made up, but David didn't want to wear that today.
I'm looking forward to my exhibition match.
If you don't know what a singlet is, it's the tights that they wear for state wrestling. We do have the state wrestling coming back this Friday and Saturday at the CenturyLink Center, and Rebecca wasn't able to make it over from the CenturyLink, but she's getting ready for the Bossier Chamber Dinner tonight. But we appreciate the partnership and support, again, for our fourth year. We will be going back down in June to bid on it for the next couple of years. But, you know, again, it's a great event that has a phenomenal economic impact because we still have about 80% of the wrestlers coming from down south. But like we saw with Parkway High School, the final V and the night end up tying for the state championship team results. So it's really helped grow wrestling in this community and keeps a lot of our local folks from having to travel down. The high schools from having to fundraise and come up with that five grand or so that they have to spend down south. So phenomenal event. We'll have our press conference this Thursday at the CenturyLink Center at 2:00. And then if you can't make it out Friday, the doors open up at 8:00. Wrestling starts at 9:00. The championships will start Saturday night at 5:00. So we know Mayor Walker will be there, and we'd love for y'all all to be there because it's just a phenomenal event. Ten mats, 950 wrestlers from across the state. So we're seeing each year more and more state champions from our area. So I think it's a great event. We've also got the U.S. Boat Fishing Nationals coming up. If you don't know what boat fishing is, it's hunters that like to fish, and so they'll be shooting different types of trash fish. But Johnny Morse, you know, who owns the Bass Pro Shops and Cabela's, will actually be personally coming in for that first weekend in April, and they'll be fishing three different fisheries. So it'll also be televised. It's either Outdoor Channel or Sportsman's Channel. And so again, just another great way of using the Red River. And Don Levin's, the local general manager, has been phenomenal, as is Bill and Ashley in the boardwalk and the Waterway Commission on that. We also have the weekend before that, the Kayak Bass Fishing Nationals, which will be on Outdoor Channel. And, you know, you probably never seen these, you know, kayak bass fishing is huge. We'll have over 800 kayaks here, and they'll be fishing for over $200,000 in prizes. They're going to be able to use several different bodies of water, not just the Red River. The championship will be on the red, but they'll be using Black Bayou, you know, not Cypress, but Black Bayou and Cross Lake and the Red River. So again, a great event, and they'll be here throughout the week. And the host, there'll be a trade show and stuff going on, kind of like a Bassmaster Classic, but that'll be taking place over at the Hairs Louisiana Downs. So Mike Rich and those guys have really worked it out to have that expo over. So if you've not kayaked, these kayaks are, you know, $20,000 now, and they've got turbocharged propellers and all kinds of neat things. And then lastly, March the 5th through the 9th, we've got, if you remember, I came last year while BIPSY was actually playing in the tournament. For the next two years, we'll have the Region 14 Juco Men's and Women's Basketball Tournament here. So we'll have 12 or 14 men's teams that will be playing, including BIPSY, and they're doing a really good job this year. And then we'll have eight of the top women's teams playing here as well. So tournament will start up on Tuesday, March the 5th, run through Saturday, March the 9th, with the championships, I think, being Matt 4 and 7, I believe. So again, great partnerships, you know, we're hoping that this will really give BIPSY, they've done well, but that'll take place over at the Gold Dome. And I just want to introduce Matthew Hammack as our sponsorship manager, and, you know, one of the promises we made was not to just rely on public dollars. So he really does a good job of getting out and helping to find support to help us do more events and make them better. So any questions? Thank you all.
Thank you, Kelly. All right, unfinished business.
Adopt an ordinance to declare certain movable equipment owned by the city of Bossier City a surplus to the city's need and provide for salvage and disposal according to law. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Irwin, second by Councilman Larkin. Is there any public comment? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance repealing the appropriation of $166,850.62 from the Police Department Operations Budget to compensate K-9 handlers for overtime from the 2018 and 2019 General Fund fund balance. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Larkin. Public comment? Questions from the council?
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate $25,000 to come from the sales tax capital contingency fund to be used to pay part of the median on Hazel Jones Road to enhance the truck turning radius. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Just cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the water treatment plant ozone system improvement project for a total of $201,400 to come from the Water Capital Contingency Fund. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Irwin, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience on this? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to approve the use of Bossier City Water and Sewer Services for proposed dentist office to be located at 5209 Airline Drive. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Harvey, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Just cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance authorizing the sale of 6.280 acres of land at $60,000 an acre to Edco LLC and authorize the Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute any and all documents in connection therewith. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Harvey, second by Councilman Williams. There are questions from the audience on this agenda item? Question from the council? Hearing nine, please cast your vote. All right, new business.
Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC, petitioner Jim Tucker. Location, an undeveloped area located in Section 33 Township 19 North, Range 13 West, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request conditional use approval to allow for a proposed skilled care nursing facility in a residential agricultural district.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Harvey, second by Councilman Darby. Questions from the audience? Please. You just state your name and your address, please.
Tamara Crane, 739 CC Sandage in Elm Grove. Question was, do we know where the license is coming for these skilled beds for this facility?
Sam.
The company that owns this is closing one of their other facilities and moving that license to this facility.
Yeah.
So further question, then, is that license in Bossier Parish? Or that other facility, I mean?
I'd have to do research on that to try to remember, but is they're closing one facility and transferring it to another.
He'd be able to call his office tomorrow.
Come upstairs and we'll get that information for you.
Does this end up in the parish or in the city?
No, this is on that 82 acres that was annexed in November.
Right.
This is the first component of a large master plan for the family that owns that 82 acres.
All right, any additional questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? All right, cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance approving an amendment to the Unified Development Code creating regulations for the operation of private animal shelters. First reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Larkin, second by Councilman Harvey. Questions from the audience on this agenda item? Questions from the council? All right, cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to allow the use of city water and sewer services for a proposed Taco Bell to be located at 5500 Airline Drive. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $900,000 to come from the Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way Fund to supplement existing funds, with all funds to be used to construct the Walter O. Bigby Carriageway Highway 80 improvements. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to abandon a portion of an alley located within East Shreveport subdivision and more particularly located to the rear of 301 Traffic Street. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the council? All right, cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of electrician for the Building Maintenance Division. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Irwin, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one laborer, two for the Public Works Department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Darby. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one records clerk for the Bossier City Police Department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Harvey, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Approve the placement in the official minutes, the reappointment of Charlie Davis as the Governor and Authority Board Member of the Bossier City Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board, appointment effective March 7, 2019, and expires March 6, 2022.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Larkin, second by Councilman Williams.
Approve parade permit fee waivers for the following 5K Curcat Dash, April 13, 2019, and the Bel Air Elementary Mardi Gras Parade, March 5, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Irwin, second by Councilman Darby, I'm sorry. Questions from the audience? What did I say? Questions from the council? Cast your vote. All right, any announcements from the audience? Mayor?
Yes, gentlemen, on the big project of the interchange at 29220, the new entry in the Barkcell Air Force Base, a major event today. Secretary Wilson came up and opened the two bids for the project and the low bid was James Construction, just a tad under $84 million. So major step forward in that project.
Outstanding. Announcements from the council? All right, meeting adjourned.